Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the April fifteenth work-study session for the Des Moines City Council. Well, Councilmember Buxton, please unmute and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic
invisible
Thank you, Councilmember Buxton. Tonight, we have Councilmember Nutting is absent, and it is due to a pre-planned arrangement. So is there a motion to excuse him?
So moved.
It was made by Deputy Mayor Mahoney. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Harris, I think, did.
I saw, okay, it's Councilmember Harris's hand. All those in favor, please raise your hand until I call your name. Okay, I see Councilmember Martinelli, Councilmember Banks, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Buxton, Deputy Mayor Mahoney, and myself. Okay, pass is six to zero. Okay. Tonight, it's always a pleasure to talk about what's going on in our city. And it's always the city's intent to keep our community informed to the best of our ability. COVID-19 has created a series of various communication challenges. In tonight's presentation, we will review many of the topics the city frequently receives questions about. The intent here is to provide where we've been, where we are today, with current projects and initiatives, and where we're headed. There will be different people speaking on different slides. We'll have administrative staff, department heads, committee chairs and liaisons have also been asked to speak about issues that currently or recently have been considered in their respective committees or areas. There's a lot going on in this comprehensive presentation. And I think you'd be struck by how many positive things are happening in the city of Des Moines. But because there is so much in this in this presentation, I am asking that we hold all questions and comments to the end, and that ensures that all the information has been shared. We will take questions at the end. Each slide, I will note, has a number on it. So that will help with people, you know, if you have questions about a particular slide, please record the number in your question, and when we get to the Q and A and discussion portion of tonight's agenda, that way, you'll have the opportunity to go back there. So with that, I'd like to get started. Cue the slide deck, please. I can. That's a wonderful shot of our marina. If we could start to, if we could move over to slide number two. So our city was established in eighteen eighty-nine, and we've been around for quite a while. Prior to our establishment, we were primarily a community of indigenous people, but we incorporated in nineteen fifty-nine. We celebrated in twenty nineteen our sixtieth anniversary. And we did this with a series of items you, many of the public has commented about, noting, can we go back to slide number two, please? Noting planners downtown and some waterland events. And one of the highlights of our waterland events and one of the colorful parts of our history is that the Spanish Castle, which was a significant home for northwest music, ranging anywhere from swing bands all the way up to the likes of Paul Revere and the Raiders, Dawn and the Good Times, The Kingsmen, as well as Jimi Hendrix, played in this location. And where that was, some people often ask, is it's where Walgreens is today, up on Pack Highway. Our population has grown. We're up to about thirty-one thousand five hundred. And we're noted to be a very diverse population, both in age and ethnicity. And we also have a number of younger families, as well as older established residents in our community. Next slide, please. Our form of government is that of a city manager and council versus a strong mayor form of government. And the reason that we have that is that the one thing that our council is primarily responsible for is hiring and working with a city manager that understands how to run a municipality. Our form of government is set up very much like a corporation, and where all the citizens of the city are essentially shareholders. They elect their board of directors, which is your council. The council selects their representation in the mayor and deputy mayor. And then we have the city manager, who is essentially our CEO. And our CEO at this time is Michael Mathias. He's been noted as City Manager of the Year in twenty nineteen. And that is how we move forward. I will say that, why is, how is that different from a strong mayor system? A strong mayor system is a system where you will see vote John Smith or Sue Johnson, for example, for mayor. That could be a citizen of any type. When they come to, when they're elected, they do actually have an office with the city, and they have a certain number of rights. It doesn't, and fiduciary responsibilities. The one thing, though, is that they they don't necessarily have the skill set of a city manager. And if they go south with the with the council, they well, they have election rights, and it can take quite a bit of time to go through the recall process. One thing about a city manager is that they are, they serve at the pleasure of the council. So if the council and the city manager found themselves going in opposite directions, the council could replace the city manager, hire another one, and continue forward. So that's why we are the form of government we are today. Next slide, please. You know, and rather than read through the goals of the city council, I think one of the things that are important, I'll let folks go ahead and read the slide because protecting people and property and so forth is a lot of what things people expect of their of their council. But I think there's a number of things that people always expect, that they think their city government can and should do, emulating activities regionally, at the state, or even at the federal level. But it's important to note that there are multiple jurisdictions in our government system. And the reason they're there is because we all have different roles, and we all have a different scope. Our city council and our city, as you've known and you've heard us talk about budgets and things like that, we have limited resources. And our public, being the city of Des Moines, has entrusted us to manage those and provide services like public safety, roads, parks, et cetera, with those resources. We really have the objective and must have the focus that we need to take care of Des Moines. Next slide, please. But with this comes a number of challenges, and I would like to introduce at this point our city manager, Michael Mathias, to talk with it, talk with us a bit about that.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity. I think that there's probably at least three primary underlying concerns and issues that we face every day in trying to provide the highest quality of life and excellence for our residents. And those focus on maintaining quality of life, making sure that public safety is functioning effectively, and enhancing economic development, providing opportunities for everyone. At the same time, we focus on sustainability. What does, what's our city going to look like going into the future? How do we participate in our part in the reduction of climate change? We had, there's an example, at one point, the previous administration at the federal level withdrew from the Paris Climate Accords, which were almost universally accepted throughout the globe relative to efforts to reduce climate change. The city took an independent position on that and supported the return to Paris Climate Accords, which is one of the first actions the Biden administration took when it went into office. We also are concerned about financial solvency, and we've been able to maintain that and build on it, make it stronger. And right now, the city is in a very strong position. And in the last year, unfortunately, we've had the terrible challenge of responding to COVID-19 impacts, both the short and long term, and finding ways to assist our community stay as safe as possible in the pandemic. So with that, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, so with the challenges and with our charter, one of the things that we really need to pay attention to is we need to learn from our history. And there is an important document that Deputy Mayor Mahoney came across. And if we go to the next slide, I'm going to turn the mic to him to cover this issue.
Thank you, Mayor. Now, normally, we could say, let's, I'll let you read the slide, but I think it's more impactful if I do it. So this was a document, basically a comprehensive plan from nineteen sixty-two. And on page three, this was listed. Like all other cities, Des Moines has its own assortment of land problems, some of them beyond its control. One mile north of Des Moines is a large international airport, steadily increasing air traffic, flying at low altitudes, creating a nuisance and a hazard to the property in and near the approach zones of this large airport. Plans to install a second major runway paralleling the existing runway will further increase its nuisance and hazardous effects. The city is bordered and traversed by state highways. Traffic counts on these highways and on its arterial streets indicate that the daily volume of traffic is steadily increasing and will continue to increase. The downtown district of Des Moines is strung out along an arterial street. It lacks unity, and it lacks off-street parking. A recent survey by the J C has revealed the fact that many of the commercial structures can be classified as old and needing repair replacement. A survey made in February of nineteen sixty-two analyzing assessed valuations of land and building in the downtown area indicated that on several parcels of land, the land itself was worth more than the commercial structure on it, and the city needs sidewalks. In a lot of cases, what's changed is that we now have a third runway, and we got a few sidewalks. And the point is, is that there's a, there's a thing called the definition of insanity. And that's to do the same thing over and over again. So a lot of times, we hear some of our constituents go, oh, the council isn't getting anything done. And quite honestly, we all have to own that this has been an historical problem with this community. And I'll give you a couple of quick examples. So if you go up on Pack Highway, the lines of the city are look like a sawtooth. And then back in the seventies, when the city wanted to stay the small little town, they weren't thinking big picture. What happened is Kent came in and got it. And today, we suffer from some of the policing situations we have and so forth, which would have been much more simplified had that been done then. Not, not, we're about fifteen, twenty years ago, we had a lot of the Chamber of Commerce split into three factions based on political issues, et cetera. And honestly, kind of pulled us apart as well. So, and we still actually, to this day, face some of those challenges. But here, but here's the deal, and could we go to the next slide? So this is, how do you break this insanity? Okay, so over the past five years, under Michael's leadership, the first thing is we were, we're out of what was near bankruptcy, and we've become fiscally solid. This allows us to do many things. We've diversified the revenue streams to ensure sustainability. A lot of people weren't happy with some of the franchise fees and utility taxes, but honestly, they, we don't have the car dealerships and other places that you get your sales tax on. So we have to make sure we've got streams of money to keep the city moving. That's a smart way. And honestly, during this COVID situation, this has been one of the major legs of financial support that we wouldn't have had otherwise. We locked in an exceptional city manager and staff. They have done an excellent job. They come highly credited, and they deliver. They actually, through grants and other ones, they actually pay for themselves, and then so. One of the greatest things is the improved, we've improved our cred rating with Moody's Standards and Poor's to AA plus, and possibly, we could get to triple A, and we think we can do that. What that means to us, folks, is that we've got these big projects at the Marina and Redondo and so far. And we can do these at a lesser cost because we've been so fiscally prudent. We also have a general fund. And one of the standards is that we'd be sixteen point six seven percent of the general fund. I know it was like month to month several years ago, so we set ourselves up great. And this is due to some great work by our financial team. And we have expanded some parks and recreational facilities. The Midway Parks, which you're going to hear about later, and of course, like the Van Gasken property and some of those things are going to make the quality of life that's going to be better. We've also had some issues, and everybody remembers the thirty-dollar car tabs and even Initiative nine seventy-six. Well, we got to pave roads. We've got to do infrastructure. And quite honestly, we went years without any kind of repairs or improvements. We have done some things where we've been able to slowly and methodically get back to getting roads done. I point to two sixteen and two twenty-third, and in summer, we're going to be doing some roads up on on North Hill in conjunction with Highline Water. And then the best part is we're setting us ourselves up for the future of our Marina and our Marina District Development Plan. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Michael and his team.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I might add to the previous slide. The mayor and Councilmember Nutting were the two members of the council that were a part of a previous council who faced bankruptcy for the city. And by diligent work and, you know, compliment the mayor at this point for his efforts, we were able to emerge from that risk to the city. And now we're thriving and financially strong. And that took a team effort, and that's been the nature of everything we've done. So moving on to the Marina District. Thank you. You can see, this is Des Moines Marina. On the, on the left-hand side of the slide is the Des Moines Creek and the beginning of the bulkhead, the trailhead, actually, for the Des Moines Creek Trail. The green is where the potential Marina steps are going to go, and we'll talk more about that. And also, two twenty-third, we're planning on doing very significant environmental enhancements to that roadway to increase the quality of treatment of water coming from the watershed to the north that comes down through the two twenty-third to the Marina. So there are ways that we can work to try and enhance a number of environmental aspects. With that, I'm going to ask Scott Wilkins, our harbor master, to us talk about the first few bullet points of the next slide.
Thank you, Mr. Mathias, Mayor, City Council, Scott Wilkins, Harbor Master of our Des Moines Marina. The first one there, Marina dredging, back in November of two thousand nineteen, we started the process to do our dredging project, which we need to do every ten to twelve years to keep the Marina safe and operational. December two thousand nineteen, we went out to bid with anchor Q and A. Then January fifteenth, we opened bids, and American Construction was awarded the contract. They gave us a great price. Eight months later, we still hadn't had all of our permits. We had all but one, the NIMs permit, which you're all familiar with, with some other projects around Puget Sound and in our own Marina. So after, in September, we went out to the Corps of Engineers, asked for an emergency dredging permit. October, we were granted that permit. And two weeks later, American came in and dredged our Marina entrance back to an original minus thirteen tide, minus thirteen. We're still working with the, with NIMs now. We still have to do our mitigation for that project. And we're, we're working on that, and we'll be coming up with that real soon. Our, the North Marina Bulkhead, we all understand the importance of that bulkhead. We understand that's where we hold our events. That's where everybody parks to go out to the, to walk the fishing pier and enjoy the waterfront. It's also the protection of the Marina, and it's also a huge, huge part of our emergency management and everything like that. Andrew worked his tail off on this one, and he finally has all his permits in place. It goes out to bid on April twenty-eighth. And then bid openings, I believe, are May nineteenth, with construction starting shortly after that, right in probably summer. So, yeah. Our working Marina, council has always supported a working Marina. We have many voters on Puget Sound, along with many in the Marina. And, and us ourselves at the Marina truly value CSR and their team. They're a great asset to the Marina, and we rely on them heavily. And they're a great tenant, and we appreciate them very much. Lastly, our dock replacement. Everybody knows we're working hard on a, on a master plan for this. Our Marina is now fifty years old. It's time to reinvest in our Marina, into our docks, and if it's in the infrastructure, that's, that's fifty years old. So we can carry many years into the future. Tomorrow, an RFQ goes out to, we'll be looking for architects and engineers. We're looking for someone that can help us with costs permitting and designs, and so we can get some hard, hard, nail down some hard costs and financials on that. And that's mine. Thank you, Mr. Mathias.
Thank you, Scott. And RFQ is a request for qualifications from qualified contractors and developers. Is that right?
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you. At the same time that there's changes happening on the water side and improvements to the Marina, there's also a lot of attention being paid to the land side development. And we've had the fortune of doing quite a bit of planning, feasibility planning, financial planning. We've had two really spectacular community open houses. One in October of twenty seventeen, where Argosy Boats lent us a boat, and many of you may have participated. We had an open house on that boat that was parked at the Marina and got an idea of what people's view of the best uses for the Marina floor, what types of shops they'd like, what types of retail, commercial, if any. And so we're able to gather a lot of information and community input from that. We held a second large public workshop. That one had about two hundred and fifty people. And we had another one that was larger than that at the Yacht Club in September of twenty nineteen, where we talked about different renderings of potential looks for Marina steps that would connect the Marina to the downtown through something similar to the Harbor Steps in Seattle. A lot of people commented on that. They liked that. A great deal of support for that. We've also had discussions regarding the potential for passenger ferry service, and we'd be bringing more back to the council in the future regarding that, and looking at ways to establish private-public partnerships and to have, you know, really quality development occur on this incredible asset to the city. There's construction in the downtown. The theater is taking place right there in Marineview Drive. We're hoping that the development in the, in the Marina and elsewhere initiates the development of stagnant properties in the downtown. We have a number of parks that overlook the, that overlook the Marina. We're going to be enhancing Van Gasken. We're looking at ways to maximize Overlook Two and Fifth Avenue. Overlook One will, of course, be the top of the Marina Step Stairs. And I think I'm taking Susan's, but at this point, there are also enhancements to the beach park, including playing equipment. And COVID has really set us back at least a year in everything that we've wanted to do. But now we're in a position where we can pick up the pace again and move forward. So with that, I'm going to ask Susan Caesar, who is our Chief Strategic Information Officer, and also our Director of Parks, Rec, and Senior Services and of Community Development. Susan.
Thank you, City Manager Mathias. This slide are a few concepts that were inspiration for the Marina Steps. And I think at least one of them is the Pike Place Market expansion in Seattle and the Harbor Steps. And this is, these are just some examples of connecting downtown to the waterfront. Next slide, please. So this one is a concept drawing that was shown at one of our open houses. As City Manager Mathias mentioned, we had a tremendous turnout, really unheard of for a planning project. It was really great to see hundreds and probably a total of four, between four and five hundred people at both of those open houses. The concepts that were shown there received a lot of positive feedback. There's been a little bit of refinement to this. You'll see the steps there. It may turn out to be a little more ramp-like as far as meandering down from the top, from two twenty-third. And the building that's shown on the left there, we're referring to as Parcel A. And we're, we're reaching the point of going out for a request for qualifications to find a developer. We were thinking, just from contacts that we've had from developers and tours that have been given, that there's a high likelihood that that could end up being a boutique hotel. It would, the rooftop is coincident with the street level. And so that opens up some opportunities for use of the roof as a green roof and potentially a restaurant. There could be other uses in that building as well, perhaps office or retail spaces. And then, Dan, I'd like to introduce Stan Brewer, Chief Operations Officer, to talk about the other parcel on the right and that we're referring to as Parcel B.
Thanks, Susan. Yes, council, last week, we had a good presentation from Mark Bunzel from the Wagner Group. Mark has been helping us on the water side of the Marina redevelopment project, looking at infrastructure in the Marina, both on the water side and the land side. And one of the things that we've been exploring is the idea, he mentioned an adaptive purpose building. It's, it would be something that would be located on this Parcel B that would actually serve a number of uses. Dry stack storage for boats. We've talked about open-air market, the farmer's market out in that area. So as we move to rebuild the dry sheds and accommodate smaller boats off of the water, we think that we can come up with a kind of a mixed marine use building of sorts that's kind of in the location where this building on the right is shown. And the idea would be to construct a building that would cascade down towards the waterfront, not blocking any views of the condos. We've heard loud and clear that that's a no-no. And so we want to have a building in there that would fit with the symbiotic connection between Parcel A and the hotel and the Marina Steps. We've also looked at, one of the renderings that Skylabs helped us come up with was a meandering pathway that we could incorporate into the roof of that adaptive purpose building. And there was a lot of public interest in that path and having a public, open public space and coffee shops and, and things like that where people could enjoy that infrastructure. Next slide, please. Here's just another vantage point of that same area. You can see the Parcel A structure, the Marina Steps. The Parcel B structure, it's kind of an olive color there, and then the market that's kind of shown. You can see the current dry sheds for the Marina. The idea would be to rebuild those and incorporate all of that use into one structure that would come all the way down towards the promenade. uh, towards the promenade. The nice thing about, um, the, these two, uh, parcel projects and development on the Marina is is the connection to the downtown. And so one of the, the key things that we've been talking about with council and the community for a while is the pedestrian accessibility to Overlook One and Overlook Two. And, uh, we've talked, uh, about the, uh, the bulkhead work earlier on that we're gonna start this summer, but we also are gonna be um, finally able to address some of the, the landscaping work at the Van Gasken Park. And as part of that, uh, looking at a temporary, uh, pilot project of closing Fifth and, and working towards, uh, creating that pedestrian corridor and connection that we've been talking about for a while. The other thing that, um, I wanted to mention on this slide before we move on is, you know, we have a keen interest in environmental stewardship and, and making improvements to the, uh, out, the outflow of Des Moines Creek. So we wanna work with, uh, our environmental agencies and, and Ryanine for salmon habitat, uh, restoration. And, and looking at creating a more fish-friendly, uh, entrance to the Des Moines Creek, uh, right now with the, the rip rap there that you can see, that is, uh, needing to be replaced with something that's more environmentally friendly. So we're working um, on those kinds of improvements, uh, in the Marina area. Takes us to our next slide.
I think this one is, uh, did you want me to speak to this one?
Please.
Okay. Um, yeah, so this is the view, um, to, uh, into the beach park from the Marina. And this is where the previous Wasson House was located. And as you can see, this is an absolutely spectacular uh, view and connection between the Marina and the beach park. Um, it's, it's been so many, so much positive feedback, uh, around this. There, I've actually heard comments where people, uh, kind of stopped and didn't realize there was a park on the other side of this house because it felt like, uh, entering a residential neighborhood. So this area is just an amazing improvement and it's actually quite popular um, with, uh, for usage by the public. Next slide.
Thank you, Susan. Um, I'm gonna share this slide with Councilmember Buxton. But I'm just gonna say that one of the, the, the fundamental underlying aspects of how we're approaching all of this has to do with the city's sense of responsibility for the stewardship of our relationship with Puget Sound. And ways to enhance the sound, um, and address multiple issues of benefit and value. And with that, um, Councilmember Buxton, would you like to speak about SR Three?
Sure. Thank you. Uh, yeah, uh, you can see in the slide there, Casey, we give great kudos to her and her heart for uh, passionately, uh, serving our mammals, actually in the Puget Sound area. She recognized that there was a huge need to, for marine mammal rescue. And there's, the only other facility on the West Coast is down in the Southern California area. So she began working, uh, working this passion of hers in West Seattle, not near the water, but up, up, uh, higher on the hill. And it was very successful, but she was running out of space. And so through some great work, uh, finding this partnership here, I think our city manager, Michael worked, uh, hard, our deputy mayor worked making some connections and the short story is, we are thankfully and thrilled to be hosting, uh, SR Three down on our Marina floor. It fits right in with the vibe that we have going down there. It's a, it's a great partnership for our city with the sound. And a little interesting note here, we have a kind of a sister city in Talquah, Oklahoma. They felt a connection with a story about our, our orca from last year, Talquah. And as a result, they, they came up and they've partnered with SR Three to support the work that we, that Casey does up here with SR Three. So we're thrilled to have them as a vibrant part of our, of our community, working down next to the water. It's a great fit for them and a great fit for us.
Thank you, Councilmember. And also on the slide, people can see that there's gonna be a grand opening of SR Three, a ribbon cutting on April, um, twenty-second. And I believe it's at eleven AM. Is that correct?
I believe that's, that's correct.
Okay. I'm sorry. I couldn't see on the. So, next slide. Um, the, the Marina is both a destination for people regionally, locally, regionally, nationally, and to some degree internationally. And it provides huge opportunities of benefit for the city, uh, for the Marina itself and for the region. Um, recently Ranger Tugs started showcasing boats on one of the docks and their comment was that it was a game changer for them in terms of the exposure that people were having to, to the product that they provide, which is very high level quality, um, boats. The same time, we know the quarter deck is down there and, um, that's a great operation. That came from what was called one of those container cargo uh, concepts that are utilized pretty widely in Europe and are just starting in the United States. And that was the opening kind of foray into business development on the Marina floor. At the same time, pre-COVID, we would have the farmer's market with somewhere between two and four thousand people um, every weekend in the summer coming down there. And all of those opportunities, SR Three's presence, you know, on more on the, the, the marine protection side. But all these multiple types of uses, um, will all feed into the Marina redevelopment. Um, if we have a boutique hotel that becomes part of that development with restaurants and dining. If we can do the all-weather ex- extension for the farmer's market. All of those things breed activity and the opportunity for the Marina to be used as, as a central gathering place with multiple activities and opportunities for enjoyment, recreation and fun. And so we're looking forward in all that we're doing and the council's support for doing a lot of planning um, in making that happen for our community. Next slide. And Tracy, do you wanna talk about the market?
I'd like to note that, um, Councilmember Buxton is our council liaison to the market.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Manager Mathias. So our farmer's market is really an essential component of our, our bustling Marina, or really, it is incredibly bustling when the farmer's market is down there and it serves both our residents and it draws visitors from a long ways away. I am down there almost every Saturday in the summer. And I meet people from all over the Puget Sound and of course, people who are visiting from all over the country come down there, uh, cause they know that we have a waterfront farmer's market. So you can find flowers, produce, bakery goods, coffee and craft items, all from local farmers and artisans. And we recognize the value of the, the farmer's market brings to our community. And that is why we are, uh, investing particularly in preserving that and actually working to enhance it through the possibility of the, um, this year-round, uh, building that we're considering down, you know, on the Marina floor that could host a year-round farmer's market. It would be an all-weather building. And I think there's gonna be a little more um, talk about that as we move on through the presentation. But and as we move into the summer, I do wanna say that the farmer's market has every intention and will be operating this summer, no matter what kind of construction goes on in, uh, working our bulkhead project. And if that means, you know, reconfiguring or relocating to a little bit different area, but the farmer's market will be happening this summer, no matter what. So, thank you.
And Susan Caesar, did you wanna follow up with anything on that?
Uh, no, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, so, um, back to Michael.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, right. And the other thing, the farmer's market, we, we've been proud to participate uh, in their efforts to the degree we can be helpful. And it was incredibly outstanding partnership and job this year, this past year, to maintain access to the market despite COVID. And that was a partnership that occurred with, with the market cooperating in every way they could with the city, um, trying to help with the facilities that were necessary. King County Public Health also helped us do that. And, um, the market is just something critical to the identity and of, of our city. Um, and it's something that we wanna make sure thrives and grows and continues to be essential to what we're trying to do. And go to the next slide, please.
Wow, our theater. This is something I really look forward to talking about. The Des Moines Theater has been in this city for, and been a centerpiece of our downtown, especially with the green sign for considerable number of years. Um, unfortunately, as it aged, um, there were, there were challenges with the buildings and uh, the, we, we have been through a few different owners, but the recent owners are of a, uh, musical background as well as in construction. And, um, they are committed, uh, as you can see, uh, and this is actually an older picture of the construction that's going on, to revitalizing this building, keeping the theater intact, but building the structure in such a way that the theater can go dark. And the reason that's important is that by the mixture of businesses that they can incorporate into their current design, it's a three hundred and sixty-degree model. So you'll have businesses on the back alley where the city has partnered with Puget Sound Energy to underground all the utilities back there. And it will make a walkable alleys, alley, something like Post Alley that you might have seen, uh, or experienced downtown. Along with that, you can have businesses all around the base. And then you can have potential, uh, studios, office, uh, some residential or whatever above. Um, but the reason that it's important to have all that pay into the operation of the theater and allowing it to go dark is that that means when a theater goes dark, that gives it time to set up for, say, live theater, uh, and a live performance of, um, a play or something like that, putting up sets and making sure that everything's working. Um, it also allows you to, um, that, which, which opens up the door actually for dinner theaters and things like that in cooperation with some of our local restaurants and so forth. Uh, you can also have the spoken word, musical performance, comedic performance, or you can run film. The problem with a number of theaters is that when they become part of the equation, they always have to run a movie or something like that, which I'm not saying, I, I don't really know. I, I don't think it's been revealed exactly how this theater will, uh, function in the, in the end. But they're keeping all the opportunities open. And one of the other things is that when you look at the, the building, it appears as if it's built of cinder block. And in fact, it's really not. So it's, it's been a big part of our history. It's moving forward. Um, it's taken a lot longer because there were some things in construction that were learned as they got into the project. Um, one of the things was, I believe, and, uh, Michael, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think at one point they had to shore up the foundation with the hundred and ten yards of, of concrete, you know, so they could continue to move forward. Um, because what looks like cinder block is, is in fact not. Um, so anyway, we're really excited about that. They, their opening schedule, this is the best estimate that we have from them at this time. And I think, uh, Susan Caesar, did you have some additional information on this that you wanted to share?
Uh, yes, Mayor. Thank you. Um, as you mentioned, this is a complicated project and a lot of the complication comes from the fact that they really wanted to preserve the, the feel of the old theater and, um, and so reuse some of the structure. And really, they're building a whole new structure around. You know, so the support is, is not on the old, uh, portion of the structure. Um, at this point, they've poured the next level, uh, post-tension deck. Um, this coming week, they'll be putting solid insulation on top of the, um, of that pore. And then another four-inch topping pore. And they will, uh, then start about three months of framing work. So you'll see a lot of activity and framing, uh, happen shortly. Um, we, uh, Mayor also talked about the, the alleyway and the idea of activating that alley which will then connect to, to twenty-third and down to the Marina. So tying all of those projects together with the Marina redevelopment. Thank you, Mayor.
We'll go to the next slide. And here are some architectural renderings that have been provided to us. Um, I don't, um, again, this is an artist's, uh, or an architect's rendering of what the intended project is looking like. When I look at it, I can definitely see based on the last slide where the construction is lining up with that. But, uh, I think it will really um, be quite a statement in our downtown corridor. And it'll be nice to have a venue that has so many um, potential offerings to our community. Any further comment from, uh, our Chief, uh, Strategic Officer?
Um, no, Mayor. Just that this is gonna be a very spectacular, uh, project. And, you know, you can see the view now. Uh, I've seen some pictures from the deck and some of the residential units that will be on the top are gonna have spectacular views of Puget Sound. There'll be recording studios, um, as well. And a commercial kitchen is planned. So it's, it's quite a great addition to downtown.
Excellent. And this takes us over to something that I know many people are aware of, uh, is the redevelopment of the Wesley, um, project. Wesley Terrace and Wesley Gardens were the two buildings on that, on that location. Wesley Terrace is where is, is still in the same place. Uh, it, it has been, received some renovations. And then Wesley Gardens, uh, the building had essentially become, um, I don't know, I guess, functionally obsolete based on the demands of, um, the current day, you know, community that wants to live in, uh, a retirement community like this. So uh, Wesley has reinvested, uh, heavily in, in that. And, you know, it's funny because, um, what, what a lot of people don't, may not think about is that, um, Wesley has, um, employs a, a great number of people in our, in our, uh, town. Uh, including when I was in, uh, high school, I worked there washing dishes because you could work for three hours after school and still be home in enough time to take care of homework and do other things. So, um, it was, and then you could work a full eight hours on the weekend. Um, but they are, they have a, a real innovative design. They, they have been great partners with the city. Wesley always has. I, what a lot of people don't understand is that the property that City Hall today actually sits on came to the city from a partnership and, uh, negotiation with the Wesley, um, Wesley Group. Uh, so they've really been outstanding. Um, the other element that's being shown on here um, is the, is a sky bridge that's being proposed to link the, um, the terrace site with the other site. And, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let, uh, Susan Caesar talk more, more about that. I think one of the things that I'd also like to note is that, uh, Wesley, at one point, the Jeff Bezos Academy was looking for a place. And they had capacity on their site. And what the Jeff Bezos Academy is about is helping underprivileged, uh, children and families get their children ready to start school and be ready to learn. And so they take them at a, at a, at a preschool age and they're with them um, with certified teachers and so forth. It's, it's not a large academy, but they're with these, uh, children up to the point that, you know, they're in school and so forth. And they're getting the kind of support and advantage so that they will succeed in school. And, uh, this is a, a new project here that's taken off. But, uh, we're happy that, uh, Jeff Bezos team and Wesley could come together. And this is something that is offered within our community to help serve the multitude of needs. Susan, would you like to comment further?
Um, sure, Mayor. I can just give a, a brief, uh, update on where the construction, uh, is. Um, sure, Mayor. I can just give a, a brief update on where the construction is in its schedule. And then I think Dan Brewer will talk to the Sky Bridge. Right now they are working on the grading activity where the Gardens building was previously located. They intend to finish that grading work this summer. And they should start, a start foundation work on the new building, probably late fall this year. And then Dan will talk about the Sky Bridge.
Yeah, Council, uh, we've got some direction from you to move forward with an interlocal agreement or a development agreement of sorts with Wesley to accommodate the Sky Bridge. And so we're working on that. We've made some good progress. You know, we've have some drafts, things just about prepared, ready to start some negotiations with them. I think that it looks like Wesley was successful in getting some funding to help with the construction of this, I think. Is that correct? Michael?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, so that's good news. So this will be a really good improvement and keep, keep the residents safe. They'll safer than having to go outside, especially in the winter months. They'll be able to, to go from one building to the other and really provide some connectivity for, for those communities, both sides of two sixteen. So we're looking forward to this. I don't have a schedule on when this would be constructed. Probably not something we'll see this year, but perhaps next year.
Okay, next slide, please. And then another thing that we'll kind of like to bring forward is there are a number of projects that continue in, in, in our, throughout our city. We have a variety of pictures here of, of projects that are coming together. And I'd like to, at this point, turn the microphone over to our city manager, Michael Mathias, to talk a little bit about these, what's, what's happening here on new development.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it very much. There's a lot of development, as you can see, and you'll, you'll see examples of more occurring in the city. And examples from Pac Highway that focused on some residential development, as you can see here. Commercial development. And one of the dynamics that's critical to what's happening in Des Moines is the fact that cost of land relative to Seattle or Bellevue is significantly less in South King County. And so that lends itself to investment and developers come through. But as we'll talk about a little further on, we're also blessed by some huge improvements to our infrastructure relative to, to the movement of people through rapid, the, the light rail and also through five oh nine improvements. And so there are a number of pieces to the equation that lend itself to development occurring. And I think one thing, you know, we didn't mention is that we have an amazing building department. It's very skilled in helping developments move forward consistent with the laws that were required to follow. So that, that's been a real positive for us. And I also want to say the mayor early on said that there were a lot of pieces of information. And I have to tell you, that's correct. And in trying to sort all of those out, I made an omission that Councilmember Banks was right there too, as we recovered from bankruptcy. And can appreciate her help more and I apologize for that omission. Mayor?
Okay, let's move forward to slide number, next slide. And I believe the microphone goes to Susan Cesar.
Thank you, Mayor. Midway Park, um, this is really, um, it's hard to pick a favorite project, but this is really one, one of those that is in contention. Midway Park is located in the Pacific Ridge neighborhood. And that is the area of our city that is most in need of open space. We were very, very fortunate to receive two rounds of grant funding from the King County Conservation Futures Fund to completely fund the acquisition of four parcels adjacent to Midway Park to expand the park to the west. The pictures on this slide are one of the first two parcels that we closed on last year. And the house there on the upper left is now demolished. And you can see in the bottom picture what it looks like now. It's, it's just a, an amazing change, opens up the park to, I think that's twenty-eighth Street and increases the usable open space as well as safety into the park. So the, it's really an amazing difference. We did also close on the third parcel, uh, April sixth, I believe. And you will, they're doing some assessment of the building right now to see what we need to do for demolition. But you will see that, that building also be demolished. And the fourth and last parcel will close in October. So when all four of these parcels are, are finished obtaining and the, the structures are demolished, this will completely transform Midway Park. Next slide, please. The other thing that's been happening in Midway Park are a, a great partnership that we've had with the Seattle Sounders and the Seattle Storm. And they did a redo of the court. They resurfaced it. They worked with the kids from Midway Elementary to create artwork for the goals. They also support this park with ongoing programming. So far, we've had a virtual clinic that was coached by the Sounders and the Storm. And the kids got their balls ahead of time delivered by our Parks and Rec staff and then were able to participate virtually. They had a, a very small event to open up the, the, what they call a mini pitch, which supports both basketball and soccer. We also, as the city, participated by doing new furniture and picnic tables and all of that. So we look forward to the time when we can do more in-person programming because that ongoing support is available to us from the Storm and the Sounders. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And this takes us forward to our next slide. We receive questions about light rail all the time. And we are fortunate to have our deputy mayor, Matt Mahoney, who's our chair of our transportation committee, but also the, well, I'll let him introduce his role on skateboard. But I'll let him take this one. There's, as you know, there's a lot going up on Pac Highway. Deputy Mary, you want to fill us in with support from Dan?
Thank you, Mayor. What's exciting about this is that we're going to have, basically have three light rail stations within very accessible points to our city. We've got the Angle Lake existing today, which many of us ride. This next one will be coming across from Highline College, which is going to give new access to the school. There's going to be a lot of development around that area, which is exciting. And then down on Star Lake, just south of two seventy-second, that area there or just north of two seventy-second is going to be one of the new locations. So all, both the north, central and south portions of our town are going to have light rail readily accessible. And that makes us very attractive for the future and it makes it very easy for the community to commute to work or access Seattle, see a game, et cetera, but not have to take their car. So it's very green and environmentally thoughtful, as I would say, and the details I'll pass over to Dan on where they are.
Thank you. Yeah, this is a great photo. I have to give thanks to my counterpart at the City of Kent. Obviously, the, this is a photograph of the Kent Des Moines Station across from the college. And you can see that the, the girders are now being placed on the columns. And so the, the light rail alignment and, and kind of what it's going to look like is really starting to take shape. So the station area, uh, this is what you're looking at. Across the street, looking west is the, the Highline Place Development that we worked on with the college and, and other folks there. It's really the first transit oriented development for the Kent Des Moines Station area. You can see the access to College Way, that street there across from the station will be widened out with some agreements that we have with Sound Transit and the college that, so we'll have a, a brand new public entrance into the college with a nice roundabout and, and access to the parking lot. There'll be a new traffic signal here at College Way and Highway ninety-nine. So we're looking forward to this. A lot of progress is being made on the guideway and we'll see more and more construction occurring, especially this summer on the project, so. It's gaining a lot of ground here.
Next slide. With that, should we move to slide twenty-four?
So the, uh, here's a, another small project I've been working on is the SR five oh nine extension project with Washdott. And this is a rendering that we, we've got from Washdott and, and their design bill contractor, Atkinson. And so here, you're looking kind of northwest. You can see the, the airport kind of in the background there, Angle, in Angle Lake in the distance. This is showing the new five oh nine freeway or highway going over I five and eventually coming down to the west here. And you can also see the light rail alignment at grade there, uh, up against I five. And then as you kind of follow that around, you can see how that will go up and over Highway ninety-nine in the distance there. And, and just the other side of that, you can see twenty-eight, twenty-fourth. So our connection to the business park. And so this project is, is gaining ground. The Atkinson's been given notice to proceed. It's hard to believe. We have worked on this project for twenty years, over twenty years. So it's, it's fantastic news to see this moving forward. The, the heavy construction will begin, they're going to break ground in November of this year, starting at the Kent Des Moines Interchange. Right now, the contractor's out doing some, they're going to be doing some geotechnical borings and things like that. But we've been starting to get a lot of submittals and design review on that. So Tommy Owen, our civil engineer is, he's been really busy on this project as well. Just want to remind everyone that, and it's not shown in this picture, but as part of the project, the two sixteenth bridge over I five is being rebuilt. And that construction project on that will start August next summer, twenty twenty-two. And that reconstruction project will take about a full year to complete. And so during that timeframe, the traffic will be restricted to westbound traffic only on the bridge. And so we'll, we'll be doing some outreach and communications about detours and things like that. But there will be some, you know, impacts as that construction continues. So anyway, that's kind of the update on the five oh nine project. Happy to see this project get going.
And so are we. Twenty years is a long time, Dan. Since you've got the microphone, uh, let's go to twenty-five and have you cover, cover that.
Yeah, well, down in Redondo, we, a few years ago, you know, we had the King Tide event and we lost the old boardwalk. And so we were really fortunate to, to get some help from the state. And we have a nice new quality boardwalk down there. We have a lot of pedestrian activity down there every, every evening, especially on nights like tonight. I'm sure that there's a lot of people down enjoying the, the boardwalk. This is the council knows and the community knows, we've, our fishing pier has sustained some damage to the piling. And so we're, we're well underway on design to replace that fishing pier. And, and there's some images shown here on the left. And so Andrew's, Andrew Murgis, our, our city engineer has been working hard on that to get the designs wrapped up. We're in permitting now on that. And you know what? We're, we're likely going to run into the same kind of timeframes and issues that we did on the bulkhead project on this when permitting. So it could take some time to get our permits lined up. But as part of that fishing pier reconstruction project, we're also the Redondo Restrooms, which are over the water. That's just, it's time to move those, that facility that is needing to get rebuilt. And so we're, we're in the process of redesigning that as well and and incorporating that into the Redondo parking lot. We have heard some, you know, input from the community down there. And we're also looking at ways that we can incorporate the paid parking upgrades that we've been talking about there, all at the same time or even sooner, hopefully. So that's kind of a status report on the Redondo projects. Deputy Mayor, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Yes, as a, as a diver, an avid diver, what I'm most excited about is a lot of the, the access to a great diving site. That's very popular will be made easier because we're thinking holistically. And in the planning of the restrooms, they've also included showers and the ability for divers to better access that spot. It's going to bring people to our community in a great recreational and environmental friendly manner. So it's great partnership. Love it.
Okay, uh, can we go to slide number twenty-six? And I believe this is city manager, Mathias.
Thank you, Mayor. So just completed projects and, and I think what's interesting is that not only have we had a huge amount of activity in the past number of years, but a lot of that didn't really stop with COVID. There's a lot of development and investment that kept on going. And I think that's just testimony to how an attractive environment it, it is for investment in, in, in our city. Looking at these kind of in a clockwise way, the upper left hand is aspects of the business park. And we have some amazing tenants in that. That was a public-private partnership that involved the Port of Seattle, the city and a private developer, Panatoni. And then Panatoni continued to develop and went out on its own and brought in some amazing tenants, including outdoor research. They now have a retail outlet there. They, uh, that's their center for internet sales is in Des Moines. Bartel Drugs has both logistics and distribution facility there. We have K two skis, uh, working at the Business Park, AmerisourceBergen, the largest pharmaceutical company in, in the United States with, made about fifty million dollars of improvements to their facility to help with automation. And they distribute drugs to five separate distribution centers that then go to pharmacies and hospitals. Partners Crackers has a facility there where they do both the gluten and gluten-free products that they provide. And they do all of their office distribution from the, and, and, and production facilities there from, from the business park. Another, another company, and you can see just at the bottom of that picture, there's quite a bit of, of the, the, on the, the roof for HVAC and other things. And that's called Green Core. Green Core is an amazing company, Irish company. They make millions of sandwiches a day in the East Coast of the United States for Starbucks and seven eleven. And they moved out here. They put about ten million dollars of improvements into their building. And they also make sandwiches for, for those and other clients on the West Coast. To the right, the upper right hand, you see the Four Points Sheraton Hotel. They've suffered through COVID and had to restrict a lot of their operations. Think they're slowly coming back online. And just a beautiful facility, affordable, accessible to the airport, accessible in the future to our Marina. And, and they've been a great partner to work with. Bottom left hand, we're looking at the Federal Aviation Administration Building, which was approximately a hundred million dollar building, about three hundred thousand square feet, about sixteen hundred and fifty federal employees are, are employed there. And on the right, I believe that's Wesley with some of their improvements. What the, uh, what, one of the things that we've tried to do is take advantage of the fact that the business park has about four thousand employees now. And we want to make it available for them to come downtown and eat and use restaurants and whatever, you know, outdoor facilities when the time comes and take advantage of the Marina. So in the earlier pictures of infrastructure, we established a metro community shuttle that shuttles people from the Angle Lake Station through the business park to the downtown and back. And with the idea that if you can, if you work in Des Moines, you can get here. And with the idea that if you can, if you work in Des Moines, you can get here by shuttle, never using, having a vehicle trip hit the grid. And that can also be redirected into consumption in our downtown, which will help our local merchants. That's all I have in that, Mayor.
Okay, take us forward to our next slide. And we'll start with the microphone on with Dan Brewer.
Thanks, Mayor. So here's an image of our completed, most recent completed roadway corridor two sixteenth. By now, I'm sure all the councils had the opportunity to drive this corridor from essentially our downtown core all the way up to Pacific Highway South. And you know, you can see in this kind of the 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 theme that we have for our urban arterials. This is part of our street standard approach as we as we rebuild our major roadways like twenty-fourth, eventually two fortieth. And and other streets, you know, this are, this is what our streets will look like. The streetlights may look, you know, a little bit different here and there. Some of the furniture may change, but and but the landscaping and the and the way that we improve our roads will look like this. You know, one of the things that this particular road and project was helpful with, and you you can see it on here, we have multimodal access. So we have bike lanes, wide sidewalks. On this road, we have access for transit. The Metro Shuttle that brings folks from the Angle Lake Station down to our downtown core. This roadway also acts as a critical emergency management link if we ever needed that between the marina and the airport. So there's a lot of facility and utility with this road as it serves the business, not only the business park, but our community providing beautiful access to our downtown.
I'd just like to add to this that it's amazing the way our staff, particularly Dan and your team, found a way to pay for this with the impact fees we received from some of the properties in the Business Park and so forth. Along with grants and other things, the city paid a very small percentage of this project and are moving that knowledge and that skill level to twenty-fourth for next summer.
Yeah, I would say that on this project, the two sixteenth and the twenty-fourth Avenue projects. As far as local money into these improvements, we're in the neighborhood of ten percent local money, maybe a little bit more, but not much. So we were able to use a lot of grant money and other people's money to build this this infrastructure. That was, that's a good way to do it.
Well, and it took some patience. Dan, I think, how long did it take to get the four phases of this done?
I'm trying to think back. If Lynn Madison was here, he would know. He and I worked on this. It probably took us about ten to twelve years to get this done. So.
And I think that's a testament to the way this team works. You guys, you guys go out, you find available funds, you piece them together. And there's a lot of negotiation going on, but the fact that we paid in the vicinity of ten percent locally and the other, you know, roughly ninety percent was paid for from other sources. And we have this wonderful gateway is is absolutely amazing. One of the things that I think is, we we do sometimes hear is you know, you pointed out the multimodal opportunity here. And it's because, you know, yes, now you have sidewalks and you can safely walk. We oftentimes hear that, you know, why aren't, why aren't all our community, all the neighborhoods in our communities, why don't they have sidewalks? Well, the truth of the matter is, at the time that Des Moines was developed, it was, I mean, when we started out, it was just pretty much the downtown area. And people were buying vacation property here. It was not, I mean, when I first moved to this community, I moved into the city of Zenith, which later became part of Des Moines. And do we have sidewalks? Not unless there's been recent development. And so that's part of the challenge is that we weren't master plan development with, we weren't a master plan development with those curb gutter sidewalks and everything else. So as we get the opportunity to move forward, this is the kind of work that that our our staff does. So I think it's important that we highlight that. And with that, let's go to the next slide. One of the things that's also, you know, really great to be able to celebrate is that with the new development and the changes in in Des Moines has come opportunity for a number of new businesses. And we have seen, I will admit, there was a time when there were a lot of vacancies in the downtown area, but we're coming back and we're coming back strong. I mean, here's, here's a list of a variety of businesses that have come into our community. And there there are places for us to go, it's places for us to trade. And, you know, forever, I remember how people said, you know, myself included, you can walk the marina, but you can't get a cup of coffee unless you go up to Marine View Drive. Well, which is, which is fine, but at the same time, we knew how many people walked the marina. So the quarter deck came along and they did not just coffee. They they've expanded into really a community gathering place. You look at a number of these other businesses. And and the nice thing is that we have, like, we have a Vietnamese bistro. We have Dak Creole Soul, which is Louisiana style cooking. And and then we have, you know, the teacup, which is again, Vietnamese sandwiches and wonderful ginger and honey tea. And I small plug for those guys, when you have something sore, horse throat or something like that, that stuff's magic. Anyway, I'll go on forever. I love all of these restaurants and all these businesses. There's a couple here I didn't mention because Deputy Mayor Mahoney has a closer tie to them. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I I'd just like to call out anytime that this Hannah's done a wonderful job in making what I would call kind of an eyesore part of that one complex into a very nice outfit and and well worth the money. Harper Studios, Earl Harper moved his, Earl and Doreen moved their studio from Georgetown to here. One, to be closer to home, but two, they believed in this community. And they're going to have a fantastic, fantastic studio to do a lot of business in the community. And another one, I'll, a couple I'll point out, we've got Gravity Coffee coming in off two seventy-second and sixteenth. They're under construction right now. And that's going to be a nice little coffee place on the south end of town. And of course, one of the new ones, Legion of Barbers, William took over the Serendip Spas area and a fantastic haircut and program for a lot of people in this community. Really solid guy. You get a chance, come meet, go meet him sometime. And of course, near and dear to my heart is the Eight Dive Shop in town. So now we have two dive shops with them and TLC. And they service a ecotourism and sport in this community that's very valuable. So fantastic additions to our town.
But I want to say, you know, we're highlighting new businesses because we're talking about what's going on and we're trying to get information out. But we have a series of excellent businesses in this community. And our goal has always been as as a council and as the this, as a city to create a place that is, you know, that has many choices for people to go and shop and, you know, keep their money local. So let's go to the next slide. And with this slide, I'm going to bring in our Police Chief, Mr. Ken Thomas, and our council liaison to the Police Department. Let's talk about public safety. Ken, are you on?
Yes, I'm here. Good evening. I would like to talk a little bit just to bring you up to speed on the Police Department. We have four patrol teams. Each has four officers assigned and a sergeant. We have updated or upgraded to now having two full canine teams. A generalist canine team and a drug dog team. As part of a force multiplier, we partner with the United States Marshal Service, Alcohol, Tobacco and Firearms, FBI Valley SWAT and the Valley Independent Investigative Team. We've become a much more regionalized Police Department. And we help others and we sure get a lot of help if we need it. I think it's much better for us. We're trying to work harder or smarter, not just working harder. So we have crime analysis and investigative forensic work assigned to a senior detective in our unit. And that increases our effectiveness enormously. So we're very pleased with our development of those programs. Code enforcement remains a very strong part of our organization and in doing what we can. Cory does a wonderful job of working in our community to try to keep people in compliance with our code. We'll talk about a little bit more on one of the next slides, but one of the things we're very proud of is our behavioral health co-responder program is a way to better serve our community for those with mental health issues. Not only those that are in crisis, but those trying to prevent those from going into crisis. So a team that I spoke at the last council meeting, we just kicked off with our soft start. It's a regional program again. Again, another part of our work with police reforms, we do have dash cameras. We're going. We're in the middle of a pilot project with body cameras, utilizing drones, technology again to help increase our effectiveness. And then really, community policing is critically important to us as a police department. We've been impacted by COVID. We haven't been able to get out as much as we generally would like, but as things get back to normal and start opening up, you can see a list there of many of the programs that we've been involved in for many years and we want to get those kicked back up. So now I'll turn it over to Council Member Bangs.
Thank you, Chief. Before I got on council seven years ago, I volunteered, I started volunteering with the Police Department when we had Chief Delgado here. And it was quite an eye opener for me, but I wanted to get involved because there was an escalation back then, as there is now, of police community friction. And I wanted to make sure as a citizen that I could be involved and hopefully try and make sure that our police and our citizens had a good relationship, which, as you can see now, we do. So I volunteered. And and I'm also the chair at this point for a police, excuse me, the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee. I've been on this committee for seven years now. And I will say that given everything that I have learned and got to know in our Police Department today under Chief Thomas's guidance and Deputy Chief Cooyi, as well as your crack team, because you do have a crack team, is that this team has truly believed in community policing. Not necessarily getting out and walking the streets or biking like maybe eventually we will, but in de-escalation on any issues and in compassion when it comes to mental health. So that Behavior Health Co-Responder Program is going to be phenomenal for our department. I know that in this country, we have such angst and and trepidation around police in communities of color. And I, I for one, when I see a Des Moines police officer in a car, there's an affiliation there that I know I would be safe, being a woman of color, being stopped by our Police Department. I have no doubt whatsoever that our our Police Department embraces embraces our community and any community really, because I'm sure you respond as we all know during mutual aid. And so I thank the chief and staff with the training that they've received. I have such pride in our Police Department. And it's and it's not anything other than knowing for certain based on what I've seen, what I've heard, what I've interacted with in terms of our department. So so Chief, based on that, I I give you kudos and the teams as well. And I want to make sure that, given all of what's going on in this country, we never ever go down that path. And I know we won't. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you on reform and accountability. And again, even regardless of what happens in the future, I'm going to be steadfast with supporting this department.
Thank you. In light of what's going on in our country with policing and to build off what Council Member Bangs was speaking to, I just wanted to highlight a few of the things that we're doing in the Police Department to try to ensure that that doesn't happen here. And we are in compliance. We pay attention to community group and police recommendations on a national level, state level and regional level. And we're in compliance with those. Eight Can't Wait was one of the first big initiatives that came out. And we were in compliance almost immediately with that. We're in full compliance with Initiative nine forty and the associated state legislation that came from that initiative. We were leaders in developing the Valley Independent Investigative Team to review officer-involved shootings and other uses of deadly force. We've already spoken, we're in the middle of a pilot program with body cameras. I believe we have cameras out there just about on every shift. We have six volunteers that are actively participating in that program. We spoke about the co-responder behavioral health. So if we have an issue, we're responding with social workers. We're doing everything we can to not have police officers trying to deal with people with mental health crisis issues. Or we're ensuring that the situation is safe and then letting those professionals do what they do best and and help work through those. We are a state accredited law enforcement agency that utilizes best practices. And and very importantly, in addition to all of that, we have enormously great support from our city manager, our city administration, our city council. We're fully funded and looking to always have that support to get everything we need to keep our community safe, our officers safe, and be as effective as possible. So I'll say once again, as I close my part of this, I feel very fortunate to have the support that I receive from the city manager, mayor and council for our policing in our community. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Bangs, did you have anything additional or is that up that section?
No, I I I think as time goes on, our community will really see how dedicated this department is and how really dedicated the the city is with supporting our our city staff with supporting all their efforts. And, you know, granted, we're going to get it wrong sometime, but we're going to acknowledge that we've gotten it wrong. And in acknowledging it, we're going to make sure that we pivot to make sure it doesn't happen again. But I can't, I'll tell you, I can't say enough that I I've not seen anything related to that not happening. It has happened and there's been transparency about what happens in the Police Department. So you know, thank you, Mayor. There's really nothing more I can say. I would simply say if anyone is curious, you know, once, maybe once COVID's over, we'll have more opportunity for community members to get to know the Police Department in 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 a much better way. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go forward to slide thirty-one. I'm going to leave this to our city manager. All I'll say is that this was something that none of us expected. It came at us as a storm. And I have to give major credit to Michael and his team for the way they have handled things. And with that, I will turn the microphone over to your city manager, Michael Mathias.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to just piggyback off the beautiful comments that Councilmember Bangs made. But I can't tell you, I could not be more proud of our Police Department, the leadership, the the troops, the guild, how they go about their business, how the civilians up there are supportive. The guild, how they go about their business, how the civilians up there are supportive. And we're really blessed and I hope that everyone eventually learns that with our, with our PD. We talked about the impacts of COVID nineteen, that, that goes back a ways in the fall of twenty seventeen. The mayor, myself, about fifteen members of our staff. Went back to Emmitsburg, Maryland, where they have the National Emergency Management Institute. And we took four days of lectures, met with some amazing people, a lot of people who had actually guided New York City through the recovery to nine eleven. And the response to nine eleven, and we learned a lot about emergency management, mostly we learned that we were completely unprepared for it. So over time, we eventually had Shannon Kirchberg appointed as our emergency preparedness manager. With the emphasis on preparedness, being ready before an event occurs, not knowing what that event might be. When COVID struck, a couple of things instantly happened, one, we were one of the first cities to declare an emergency. Which is important because at some point you get federal, state and regional help. Not long after that, other cities also declared emergencies, which is still in effect for our city. And we also created an emergency operations center up at the fire station on two twenty-third and twenty-fourth. And we started meeting, set up monitoring, started meeting, started sharing information. At that point, the critical element were first responders and primarily fire. And it was difficult for our PD who are, you know, so responsive to situations. Then in any instances that were not life threatening, they really needed to wait for fire to get there, the medics. Because they had the appropriate equipment to protect themselves from, from COVID and we went through. A number of situations with both fire, police, and we were very fortunate relative to the city staff. But people did get infections and had to quarantine and came out of them. And so we started meeting daily to plan our response as a city, we closed the city. We started focusing on virtual activities, the building department at this point is almost entirely virtual. They do inspections, design review, all kinds of activities through computers. Same happened with the court, we have literally a virtual court and they're slowly, slowly getting back up. For those occasions in which they need to have face-to-face. Operations and so we stayed, we met every day and then we started to be able to meet weekly. For whatever reasons and we're, we're blessed and we're grateful that Des Moines had a relatively low. Fatality rate compared to many other places. And of course, you can never take credit for something like that, but we can take credit for having done the right thing. We had the almost complete support of the city council for everything we were doing. We received recently a letter from public health thanking us for our efforts getting our citizens vaccinated. We've cooperated, Shannon's done a great job, Dan also has been very involved in this. He's done a great job of cooperation with other governmental and health jurisdictions, including King County Center for Emergency Operations. It's, there's a hit to the revenue of the city, we tried to work with that. We were reimbursed to some degree by the federal government, there's more money coming where we can help our local businesses and. Citizens and their recovery process. And it looks like if, if, if things stay on course, that over time, we will emerge from this safely. But the jury's still out, it has a lot to do with people taking appropriate precautions. Social distancing, wearing masks, observing their health, taking steps if they don't feel well. And then getting vaccinated and we are not mandating vaccinations, but we are encouraging them. And we hope people go out and get vaccinated and protect themselves, these vaccinations do work. So with that, Dan, would you like to add anything?
No, I think that covers it well.
Okay, great, thank you, Mayor.
While you have. The microphone, I'm going to let you go forward with some of the efforts that you've actually, you and the team have moved forward to. Support the community throughout this very difficult time.
Well, a couple of things, both on the, the response to the COVID and then trying to move forward. So what we did was, we started, we were able to acquire a food freezer for the food bank. Which we were able to pay with, with federal dollars and the first cares money that came through. And so we purchased that for them, we've tried to support. The, the, the food bank and other. You know, agencies that are helping with this, we initiated the eats program. Which was a program where we gave coupons to seniors. And we gave money to local restaurants to provide meals and, and basically Friday through Sunday. And so we're spending about ten grand a month on the businesses located in the city. And we're good, about to reinstitute that program as now there's some more federal money we can utilize. We took about half a million dollars that we received and did something called the Grow Program. And that was involved us giving grants to almost everyone in the business community. Who had a legitimate need and asked for the money and they were located in Des Moines. And we gave grants up to twenty-five thousand dollars grants, they didn't have to repay them. To local businesses, we tried to work with local business on the logistics for. How could they accommodate social distancing and still function as restaurants or eating establishments or whatever. With, the governor has tried to do his best and in many respects, it's done a great job and in others, there's just been a lot of questions. About what phase we're in and what does that phase mean and so forth, but we tried to work with that with our local businesses to. Enhance their opportunity to be successful regardless of what the phasing was. We bought a number of face masks from Outdoor Research and distributed them to businesses. We're working to incorporate ways for the Maritime High School, the new Maritime High School to participate in Des Moines. There's a new charter school up on Pack Highway and one of their ambassadors and supporters is Russell Wilson. And then also the mayor described, you know, Jeff Bezos Academy, Academy at Wesley. And we're slowly, we're providing, at the moment, we're going to provide. The Underwood Park to the Little League Championships in July, if things continue to improve. And they're aware that that's subject to what improvement looks like or if we go backwards at all. We're currently allowing the Mount Rainier Girls Softball Team to use Underwood Park. For their practices and games and we're slowly trying to find ways to accommodate safe. Safe activities. And I wanted to say, Mayor, when we started this, we were trying to protect people from the disease. Now, a year later, we're hoping people have learned enough that they can protect themselves and we can move away from that responsibility. Since the information is out there to use your mask, social distance, get vaccinated and observe your health and temperature. And I'll end with that.
Thank you, City Manager Mathias. Let's go to the next slide, this is a topic that comes up quite often, it's. Beautiful building, it's been in this community longer than, I think it was nineteen twenty-eight when it was built and that's long before me. I remember when I first moved here, it looks a bit like Wayne Manor from the original Batman series, so I'm dating myself, but. Always thought that that was just a fabulous place in our city, however. Its functionality waned as a retirement home for the Masons and. Things have, things have changed there and so I'm going to bring on our chief strategic offers, Officer Susan Cesar. To talk a bit about where things are at in as much as she can about Landmark on the Sound.
Thank you, Mayor, yes, Landmark on the Sound, we get a lot of inquiries related to what's happening there. The city, just a little history, the city worked with the Masons very closely. Through about maybe six potential purchasers and contracts. With the goal of trying to find a way to reuse the building. We recognize, you know, the, the community's interest and importance there. The bottom line was that eventually, none of those contracts came to fruition and. Some of the efforts that were made included quite a bit of activity related to the zoning. The council took action to rezone the property and also change the allowed uses and some of the other. Aspects that were allowed in the institutional campus zone, which is its current zoning. So there were quite a few efforts made, eventually the Masons did sell to the current owner. And as part of that purchase and sale agreement, the Masons agreed to submit a demolition application. And the current owner, Zenith Properties, has now taken over that application. So the city's role at this time with the property and private ownership and an application into the city. Is as a regulator and we, our role is to make sure that all the applicable regulations and reviews are done and followed. As we do our review, the review that's required includes an environmental review. And one aspect of an environmental review is the impact on cultural resources. So as we go forward on that process, there will be opportunity for public comment and input on that, thank you, Mayor.
Well, I'd like one more follow-up on this and, and I think. What, what's really important is that there are many who ask us, you know. Can we do something to change things or, or whatever and I think it's pretty clear. But I'd like it just noted that when we're in a regulatory capacity. There is a limit as to what we can say and what we can do and we absolutely cannot interfere with the progress. Of the permitting and so forth that is in place without being held liable, both as a city and as from a council standpoint, personally liable. And I, if, if our city attorney, Tim George is on here, I'd like him just to be clear, so, just to make a statement about that, so we understand. And the community understands why we are in the position we are to not speak or about, about this property.
Thanks, Mayor, I think, I think Susan summed it up pretty well. The city is reviewing the permits in its regulatory capacity and so the. That's the city's role at this time, it's under, property's under private ownership and the applications are currently pending.
Okay. Let's go to the next slide, another frequent topic of conversation. You know, it's funny, it's really not, but we are. We are where we are as a city of Des Moines and the airport is where it is and we're neighbors, they're a noisy neighbor and they have an impact. They have both a positive and a negative impact, the noise and so forth, yes, through airport operations, but they also. Create a lot of jobs for the region and a lot of other opportunities. That many of us enjoy, so with the good comes the bad, but it's a challenge. And it's been a discussion as long as I've lived in this community. But I think the city is, is working very hard to make the best of this arrangement and. I, to better share some information. I'm going to again turn the microphone over to our city manager, Mike Mathias, who's been deeply involved with this.
Thank you, Mayor, the way we typically characterize the relationship with Sea-Tac Airport. Is that the airport cities, Bury and Sea-Tac ourselves, Normandy Park, Federal Way to some degree. At least on their, on their northern edge, we, we suffered disproportionate impacts. Of the operations of Sea-Tac Airport, which have huge economic benefits for the region. And the further from the airport you get, the less those immediate impacts affect you, but that's not the case with Des Moines. So we have engaged continuously since I've been here about seven years now. With the Port of Seattle and with the airport, we participate on the, on their. Community committees, we have hired independent consultants to help us. Review the, the sustainable airport master plan when they issue the environmental documents probably later this year. And we are continually trying to find ways. For the airport to minimize operations and our position is that really the baseline for impacts for the airport was two thousand twelve. And they've grown, you know, year over year, double digits almost every year since then, aside from, from the COVID year. And now they want to plan expansion and we are going to resist that. Based on environmental impacts as much as we possibly can. And so that's, that's where we are, I would also say in fairness that the Port of Seattle. Along with all other cities in King County except for Seattle, gave out these non-competitive grants. And we've used about a hundred thousand dollars of that money for our Marina redevelopment, design and feasibility. Other cities have used that money in different ways. So just to let you know that that's not a balance, that's not a quid pro quo. But that we need to take advantage of the opportunities that come to us and we need to also stand up to the airport on the environmental side when appropriate. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and Michael, why don't you keep the, keep the mic at this time if we go to the next slide. You've kind of talked a little bit about this, but I wonder if you have anything more to say.
Not, not really, here's some specifics of this Community Connections Program that runs from Angle Lake through. The Business Park, through the downtown, there's been some disruption in service relative to COVID. But the idea is to have this become a permanent route and so Brandon and myself, Dan, will all be working with Metro. To try, to try and accomplish that, but it does represent multimodal transportation. In the same way as we talk more with the community about potential passenger ferry service. Provides multiple, multimodal opportunities to get from A to B on Puget Sound without needing to get on I five. And that's all I've got on that, Mayor.
Okay, let's go to slide thirty-six and it has to do with our, the city council's support to local agencies. You know, it's a pleasure to show this slide because in our city with limited resources, it's very difficult for us to support. Just one thing because we have a great need and we're, the city of our size doesn't have the kinds of funds. Where we can fully support any one of these by themselves. City Manager Mathias, I believe when you and I started working together, you, the number that we were. Putting forward to support these local agencies was, do you recall the exact number at the time?
It was seventy-five thousand dollars.
And while we have worked together and, and during the, the past several years that I've had the pleasure of being mayor with the council. We have increased this amount by about twenty-five thousand a year to where we are at this point and that is.
Currently, we, this budget year, we put in a hundred and seventy-five thousand, twenty twenty-two, we'll put in two hundred thousand. Long ago, there was a council initiative that we tried to get to one percent of the general fund. General fund is about twenty-five million dollars, so that would represent about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we're well on our way in that direction and we've increased it every year.
And, and the councils over the past year are the ones that have made the most amount of progress with that, so I very much appreciate that and. I believe we have some comments from our Human Services Liaison and that's Tracy Buxton.
Thank you, Mayor, I think that you gentlemen pretty well covered it, I think that it's one of the most beneficial things. About the way we conduct our human services funding is that we have the opportunity to. Support agencies and organizations that are already very successful at what they do and. Also provide a vast array of services to our residents. So because we don't have a human services department in our city where we personally try and meet the needs. We can support all of these. We can support all of these very successful agencies and all from. Helping drug babies and dental health and mental health and physical health and. Survivors of sexual assault or domestic violence. I mean, a broad array of services that we can support out of our city to our residents. So I really appreciate and our Human Services Advisory Committee is made up of residents themselves. So the council approves these decisions, but the accountability, the decision-making capacity. Comes from our citizens themselves on this committee. So that is another great. A great service that we offer and a great opportunity for our citizens. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And I'll also point out that, you know, if you're looking at all these, all the other these organizations. Are incredible organizations and they provide a very valuable need and to provide support to our community. The Des Moines Area Food Bank, you know, it's not just funds that we we offer. We listen to these organizations and at one point in the beginning of covid, they didn't need. As much in, they they got their revenue and they were doing fine with that and people were thinking, well, let's, let's, let's give them more. And giving more money to keep people fed locally is absolutely a good decision. But they, one of the things that they pointed out is, we also need people to help us unload the trucks and things like that. We don't have a large enough. Volunteer base. And so our law enforcement team went up and they volunteered time. I know. Various council members and and other staffers in in the city of Des Moines went up to help. And we helped them acquire refrigeration so they could, so the food wouldn't spoil and we could get it to these folks. So I'm very proud of of what we have done and I am extremely proud of the fact that we are marching towards that one percent mark. Matter of fact, I couldn't be more proud. So let's go to our next slide, please. So that takes us to the end of the deck. And it's been a real pleasure to, you know, share this this information at this time because it's really important that the community. Hear and understand what what is going on. I'm sure we have not answered all questions. And I'm sure we have not. Completed all discussion, but the the important thing is that we do look forward that to all community members that are interested. To provide their input and and be involved in the city. And your city staff and your council are really proud. Of what has been accomplished here and and I hope that you see from this presentation that we have a very exciting future. And this is, this is a real pleasure for us to be able to bring out to the community. Now, where we're headed right now, council, is it's time wise, it's about somewhere around ten to seven, I think. It's okay. So we're gonna break. Till seven o'clock and then we will come back and we will move forward with the discussion portion of of this. Of this work study and and we will start with, if there's anyone who submitted a public comment or or called in, we'll start with them. And then we will go to a public comment, but I think our city clerk is saying no public comment. Okay, so we will start right into council. Discussion. So anyway, we'll see everybody in ten minutes.